Okay, it is 5:30. So we'll call the meeting to order. If we would please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. And I have the motion here for executive session. And how long will we need?
Hopefully fifteen.
Fifteen? So we'll start off with fifteen minutes. So I will move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city's attorneys. Attorney regarding the ongoing litigation pursuit to the attorney-client privilege exception, KSA 75-4319-B-2. The open meeting will resume at, in fifteen minutes, would be?
5:47.
5:47. That's a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
CB, Jeff. Commissioners, Jeff.
And Terry.
And Mike.
Terry and Kelly.
Okay. So put us back here at 5:57. Correct, Mike? Okay, is there a motion to extend?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are back in exec-- or from executive session, an open meeting. We are going to extend another ten minutes, so can we?
6:07.
Huh?
6:07.
Yeah, 6:07. Motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Start back an open session. And we will have, in addition to the agenda, on the items for commission action, you can make this item. Get to my agenda here. Maybe D. We can make it Item D. Is that good? You good with D? Yep. Item D. Okay. Any other additions to the agenda that you guys are aware of?
No.
All right. So we need a motion then to amend the agenda adding Item D.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we add Item D. Item D is in agreement with the lateral sewer district number two. So. Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Okay. Now we're ready for the adoption of the consent agenda, which is Items A, B, C, and D.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss Item C very briefly.
Okay. We'll pull it off then. Okay. Leonard, you good with the rest?
Yeah.
Okay, so then entertain a motion to entertain Items A, B, and D.
So moved.
Second. Go ahead. Leonard, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Presentation time. This is the fun one. Craig?
Sean? Go ahead.
Okay, if I could have Aaron Cook and Katie Foreman come up here. All right, I guess Katie had to take off, so we'll have Aaron Cook up here. On November 2nd, 2017, Aaron Cook and Katie Foreman were dispatched to a remote location in the county for a man having chest pain. They arrived on scene and made contact with the patient, assessed the patient, and gathered pertinent information from him, loaded the patient into the ambulance, and after a few minutes, the patient went into cardiac arrest. They initiated advanced life support measures along with CPR. They were then able to obtain a pulse. They assisted ventilations while en route to the hospital. The patient was admitted to the hospital and a few days later was discharged from the facility. So at this time, I'd like to present Aaron with a life-saving award. Mayor?
Yep. Come on, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your professionalism, and thank you, Katie, as well, for your work, and thanks to your whole staff. We did some pictures here.
You can kneel down in front.
Yay. Public hearing time. It's a public hearing to consider the condemnation of a structure located at 223 West Main Street as dangerous and unsafe. Don?
Yes, we would like to, uh... Is it postpone or adjourn until the second meeting in January?
January 25th.
Okay. It's a new podium. I've got to get used to this. Uh, we have, there's a potential buyer from Tulsa that would like to come up, look at the building, and then also meet with city staff. So we'd like to adjourn to allow that to happen, to see if there might be any change in the status.
Okay. Entertained a motion then that we adjourn hearing until, what was the date?
January 25th.
January 25th.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the condemnation hearing until January 25th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're good. All right. Items for commission action. Let's take Item C first, Gary's. That was up on the agenda.
No, sorry.
Sorry. I just briefly wanted to ask Kelly. I know we've been meeting on Thursday nights, but is that, has that worked the best over the years? You've been at more of these meetings longer than anybody else.
Um...
Do we want to keep it on Thursdays, or?
I used to have it on Thursdays for as long as I could remember. It used to be every other Thursday, then they changed it to the second and the fourth.
Right. Okay.
And that's, you know, and at one time, they had them during the day, like in the mornings, years and years ago.
Okay.
I just wondered if we got an input from Louis, since he's going to be one of the ones up here, Thursday night works for him and city staff and all. Okay, all right. Just wanted to ask that question.
That's a fair question to ask. All right, so then we'd need a motion to approve the 2018 City Commission meeting and city holiday schedule.
So moved.
I'd make that a second. All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. So we're good with that. Now we'll catch up. Item A, under Items for Commission Action, is to consider approving a revised design of the Park and Zoo entrance sign at installation at the northeast corner of Penn Avenue and Oak Street, as submitted by Forepaws.
Hello. Hi. On November 22nd of 2016, you approved this sign here, a design for the Penn and Oak sign. As we went into cost and, uh, they just kept going up and up and up. And so, as we discussed, like with Lisa from the chamber and everything, she basically has the LED display sign and would be happy to put that information there for us and everything. So we had decided, or Forepaws had decided, that they'd rather spend the money, you know, in the park instead of spending so much money on that sign. So we went back and re-went through designs. And this is the design that Forepaws has agreed to. It took us quite a few months to get to this point. Where it's the zula ween right there, it basically, you can, it's enclosed and you can put a banner inside, so then the wind, you know, right now, we've been putting stakes in the ground and putting signs in. And this will be inside protected. And then you can see the night view there where it says Park and Zoo, and you can also see the banner at night.
So there'll be a light outside of it?
It's illuminated inside.
It's inside of it, okay.
Uh-huh.
Did you want to say anything?
So, uh, excuse me.
What's on the back of the sign that says Park Zoo with the arrow?
Same thing. You can see it on both ways. It's two-sided, yeah.
Okay. But will the arrow?
It'll point in the right direction.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not going to send you to Casey's.
As you leave in the park, I don't want somebody just making a circle there in the intersection. Following the arrow.
We want them to go to Casey's and buy something.
I see that the proposal says rock masonry by others. Have you got that arranged?
They're currently working on that.
So the price?
Do you?
Okay. But so even with that, it's going to be far, far cheaper than the other?
Oh, yes. Considerably cheaper. And, you know, the cost is, will be picked up by Forepaws.
Right.
There's, and that way, we can put, we feel that this is a better design for the park. Uh, the other one that we did like, but then we, you know, I always thought it was a little bit much, you know? They were expecting more when they came to the Park and Zoo. Not that we don't have a beautiful Park and Zoo, but we just felt like this fit the design of our Park and Zoo.
But this mounts, or it will be installed perpendicular to Penn Avenue, not parallel. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. I was, for some reason, I was thinking, "parallel." And I'm struggling, I'm still lost with that corner following the arrows. But if it, yeah.
And it will sit approximately where the other sign is. It may have to go in just a little bit because of the overhead lines.
Okay.
We'll make sure that that works for that, but it might have to go in just a little bit.
And the banner will be on both sides, too.
And that area is also designed so it can have a digital sign inserted in the future.
If we do wish.
It's the perfect size, so it wouldn't take...
So it could slide right in.
Pop it out.
And when you make it, then it'll have electrical run?
Yeah.
The electrical effort.
Yeah.
I think they're both gorgeous.
I do, too.
But I'm into saving $40,000.
I'm, yeah, those LED signs are, yeah. I'm excited. Looks good. All right. Any more questions from the commission? Entertained a motion then that we approve the redesigned, revised design of the sign for the Park and Zoo entrance.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, and we approve the revised design. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go shop now.
Yeah. Item B is considered the following regarding the 2017 CLINK project. Sean?
There are four change orders. The, if we could take them one at a time. The first change order is an additive for an underdrain. It was previously discussed with the commission. There was not a itemized summary of what the underdrain costs, but here is one that should have been included with the change order. The total of that one is $16,110. The second change order is basically deductions for participating line items that would have had KDOT funding. The third change order is deductions for non-participating items. And the fourth one is an assessment of liquidated damages. And in the discussion that you have in your packet, I called this a penalty, and that's semantic-weighted terminology. It's really not a penalty. It's simply liquidated damages that were part of the contract for contractor going overtime.
So actually, this is a results on net for a statement?
Correct. There's an overall deduction in the contract. And, I don't know if I brought the summary with me. Yeah, the overall deduction based on these four change orders is $59,539.80.
Okay, question?
Is that divided with the participating and non-participating? How's, does that all come out of our participating cost? Or does KDOT get any of the reduction back?
I'm going to have to actually look and see where you are on the amount of grant. It could be that some of that participating would be returned as part of the grant, but I believe you maxed that grant out, so I don't owe me to it, but I don't think it's going to affect your share at all. I think this is all a deduction for the city. Um, I, because you had a, if I recall, you had a $300,000 grant, but this was like a $700,000 project, and this all comes off the city side.
So we put a little more into it.
Yeah.
Because we did some additional.
Yes.
Yes. There was some ADA and some other. Yeah.
Yes, so.
So I would think that'd be the way that it would work.
Yes, I agree that...
Your question's good, but I do think that's...
It's always better if you don't have to share.
Right.
You get two Hostess cupcakes in a package, but that doesn't mean it's for two people.
That's right.
There's no share in a Hostess cup.
That's right.
But we're about to share with Trans Systems.
Which, that's coming from the contractor.
Or the state.
Other questions or comments, Gary?
No, I don't.
Leonard?
No more questions.
Okay. We need, would entertain a motion then that we approve the, let me get to it here.
Four change.
Four change orders, yeah. For, uh, Jeff, we can do that. We can move to approve the four change orders with Mission Construction and the amended agreement with Trans Systems as presented. I'd make that a motion.
But did you have your?
Yes. I, um, on the, on our amendment, that is basically due to the contractor going overtime.
This is for inspection.
For inspection, yes. And Commissioner Kofliche had asked for a summary of showing our costs for that period, which I have here. And basically, the contract time ended August 25th. There was enough in our contract to go a little, little over that to about September 8th. And then basically, after September 8th, that is outside, was outside of our contract. And the purpose of liquidated damages is really to, for the city to...
Cover this.
Yes, to cover all expenses.
Cover after October 16th.
Cover all expenses. So, so our amendment, we're asking for is basically $21,800, and it's covered essentially in that, the liquidated damages provided by the contractor.
Sean, when you write your specifications or contracts, do you have a clause that if a contractor does go over that they will be responsible to pay any additional costs that the owner incurs for additional services?
Yes. It's written in the construction contract language as to have liquidated damages plus expenses, but some court cases have determined that you cannot collect both. So you can collect liquidated damages or actual expenses. So in the city's case, I'm assuming that the liquidated damages are probably more than your actual expenses, but I don't, I don't know that, but that's my assumption.
In some cases, the contractor could go over, but his expense is not equal what you would incur as far as adjust... So in that case, the way it's written, they wouldn't go based on just liquidated damages, but then there would be the surcharge to cover your expense, too.
Correct. Either way, you are going to be reimbursed for either your actual expenses, at least your actual expenses, yes.
Okay.
Okay. You good? Now my motion's good. With the agreement with Trans Systems. So let me reread it for you quickly. I move to approve the four change orders with Mission Construction and the amended agreement with Trans Systems as presented. Would there be a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. Next is C. And this is consider adopting the following ordinances prepared by the city attorney.
Yeah, Don, Cushing, and Dave also is here to answer any questions regarding this. It's been before you, as you know, and we've been reworking it, so.
This is something that's taken one or two minutes of our time to try to implement.
We've had it on the agenda a couple other times.
We have. And you know, the problem, the challenges and the problems that come with this is the codes have not been updated for 20 years. So to say that we can do it in a seamless manner or without challenges, without difficulties, that's impossible to say. There's probably a reason why they weren't updated in 20 years. It's a difficult task to do, to do it. But we need to get them updated. It would be our recommendation that we do that. We've had some emails today with Commissioner Kofliche about a couple of issues. One, something that needed to be added, a word that hadn't been put in. And then one, we agree with his stance on probably eliminating that, uh, that portion so that, uh...
In the International Residential Code?
Yeah. Ours under, yeah, under E.
ADA.
So we appreciate having Architect as a city commissioner that can look at these and gives us, give us some advice and that. We looked at it, and we agree with yours. That should, I think, in the process, we looked at Pittsburgh, we looked at Larned, we looked at a couple other communities. I think one of these community had something similar. We put that in there. But as we look closer, we agree with your stance. Just let them stand on their own, and then we can, we can handle those situations as they come without, I agree with you, the way that it reads there, it would compel them to, to go to a standard that they may not, may not necessarily have to implement in the building, depending upon what the circumstances were. But this would make them.
Yeah.
So we agree.
But I wasn't involved with looking at the codes with you, so that's where some of the questions came up. I think I looked at some of the development for the, um, permit for construction and was at initial meeting of the plumbing board. One of the other things that, going back to it today, is on the requirement for residential, the drawings. Uh, Item D, the wall sections. With residential construction, it's all pretty typical. And, um, the additional, when you start looking at trying to develop for a house builder that's primarily going to be doing the work to develop a drawing, it's going to start adding a lot of cost.
And then one of the, at the end, is the building inspector has the right to not require any of that.
Yeah.
So I think we'll look at, we did that in case there'd be something that would require, would necessitate it.
An unusual condition?
An unusual condition. But the caveat, or the condition that the building inspector can make them not have to require that, I think, is where we'll, we'll do that and look and try to be reasonable with that. We're not trying to put undue burden on anybody to do the work, not, not a homeowner, not a business owner, uh, not a design professional, but we do want to have something in there that would address it if the need arise. But the portion that says the building inspector cannot require that, I think, would, would take care of that.
The residential construction's a little different because it's exempt from all licensed professionals.
Yeah, and they don't, they're not required to have a professional drawing.
But sometimes you can get into a framing situation.
What we run into sometimes is we get very minimal drawings and explanation of what we're, what's going to be done. We want to try to have some basis to say, we do need to have some sort of drawing or some sort of understanding of what it is that you're wanting to do, rather than, I don't want to talk out of school, but sometimes they want to tell me, well, for me to remember what they told me with as many things as we have going on, it would be easier just to have, you know, a drawing and have a basis to have some sort of, some sort of drawing, not necessarily professional drawing.
So you're trying to cover more apartment complexes and...
Things like...
There where you'd have firewalls.
Yeah, things like that.
More complex.
You know, if somebody's doing an addition or something like that, or, or moving a wall, or adding something like that, we, we'll be reasonable. We just discuss it, just have something basic and simple so that we can understand.
On a typical ranch-style, one-story house, so you're saying on that, you probably would exempt from the wall section?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So we try, we want to be reasonable, but we want to have a, we want to have something to cover, that we could show that, we're not trying to be unrealistic in a, in a demand if we have another project that would, that would require it.
Okay. The, the other code I had some questions on was the International Building Code.
Mm-hmm.
The, again, you've outlined a lot of drawings. And really, when you look in the commercial, it's required to have a professional do the drawings. Some of these are, are coming into the realm of the licensed professional determining what's needed to build. And, uh, it might be for, you know, in my opinion, for a code enforcement officer, you're overstepping because me, as a licensed professional, I know what it needs to take, and there's different methods of putting a project together to have a blanket clause. And in the IBC, it, it covers a lot and it leaves it specific. But when you go into commercial, if you're, you can reference a pre-engineered building. A lot of those are standard. You know, I prefer to detail, but a lot of times, the amount of, basically, the amount of drawing dictates the cost to my client. And sometimes you have to hold the cost down and rely upon some of the standard details, so.
We agree. We agree.
On those, you know, eliminating the drawing requirement, particularly the requirement for the structural calc. I don't, on my projects, I don't even get the calc's from my structural engineer. It gets, you know, hard to determine who's going to interpret what they are correct, but there's not a need. You're relying upon that specialist to provide the data and make sure that the connections and the loading is correct. So, you know, Wichita and Manhattan don't require the structural calc's on it, or neither do any of the state projects. So, you know, the, the section requiring the drawings, I feel that the International Building Code is clear enough to provide, give you guidance, because you don't want to take on the responsibility of approving data like that that could be interpreted that by your action, you're saying it's correct, and then have an issue that the structural engineer goes in error.
Well, I mean, a couple of things here. One is under 16 exception, the building official is authorized to waive any of the above requirements to be prepared by a resident, registered design professional who's found that the nature of the work applied for it is such that the inclusion of the above requirements is not necessary to obtain code compliance. So I think that's where we're, we want to handle that there. Second is, I think we could probably look at that specifically. What we would like to do tonight is to try to get these passed and, and get these upgraded. There's no way that we can, as complicated and as many codes as we need to pass and need to get updated, that we can address all of the issues. There will be something that comes up. There'll probably be other things that will come up. There'll probably be other things that will come up. This is, the, the addition of the codes that we have is a portion of the ISO rating for the community. If we can get them done this calendar year, we have a chance for this section of the ISO rating to move it from which five years ago was a 10. We have the ability to move it from a 10 to a, to a better score if we do it. If we don't do it this calendar year, we have to wait another five years before we have the opportunity to change that. That's, the ratings every five years. So we would like to do it knowing that this is imperfect. We've tried to do the best that we can. There are going to be some things that we will have to address and that we will have to change, and we're more than willing to look at those and do whatever, we're here for you to serve you, whatever you want to do. We would like to do it. It would be our recommendation that we do try to get this passed this calendar year and then try to deal with, with issues that come up and, and, and make this more refined and a better, and a better document.
I'm not saying to take it out of the agenda and table, but I'm just saying, I'm, I would recommend to strike that section and rely upon...
Is there a particular section that you want to have stricken?
The, um, I just printed a couple pages. It's the one where you're, you're modifying the drawings, the, uh, section 107.2, I would leave it as 107.2 per the International Building Code. The next one on 109.4 where you're talking about doubling the fees in the table above, it's like which table? Are you talking building permit? Are you talking just connection table?
The doubling of fees, which page are you on?
It's modifying 10, 109.4, this, this page.
It's right after the International Building Code?
Yeah.
Okay, modifying...
Page six. They weren't numbered in the packet, so...
They're not, they're not, it's this one right here.
Yeah.
Because it says the table above and you've got one inspection fees, or is it the valuation, the building fee? When you look at the other table, you're talking thousands of dollars doubling.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if you...
Well, we were talking about the, uh, the valuation fee on that. I think that was put in there to, to remind people to, to make sure that they're getting their building permits before they start work. Um, but if, if you want to modify that fee schedule or modify what that fee would be, we'd be more than happy to, to, to do whatever you would like to do there.
Yeah. You know, I think you should either determine a, a fixed fee, you know, 50, $75.
Well, is that covered in the fee in the bag?
It's, it should be the same table.
Yeah, that's the same. It just referred to the tables.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm looking at, and, and sometimes, depending on the work, it's easy to truthfully forget to get a building permit and then to be unilaterally hit with a thousand-dollar fine.
I, I'm not married to a fee. So whatever fee that we, that we could come to see that be reasonable...
I think it should cover your, your expense and your time to, uh, to go out and, and make effort, because I think it's going to involve some, some documentation, you're going to have to notify by letter. When you look at 109, uh, in the, in the building code, it, it, it talks about a process that you've got to go through, so, and it does say the fee established by the building official.
Mm-hmm. If you had some guidelines, what you would like to see, we would be happy to...
Is it, is it possible to go ahead and approve this and then let them, in the, say, next month?
If we approve it, then we have to come back in and modify it. So it would, it would be best if, if we can identify what those changes are, just table the, table the whole thing because we'll have to, we'll have to just...
Well, that's what...
Both those ordinances as well as appendix D, and we'll just bring it back on December 28th with the changes in there.
What I'm trying to do is just get it in, on 2007.
Yeah, we do have one more meeting.
Yeah, we don't want to go into 18.
No, we're not.
That's, well then...
December 28th meeting.
But see, it has to be published before it's affected, so you're going to be into 18, so...
Okay. All right. We need to make a change.
In the last ordinance, the thing that's in the panel is in there, but I looked at, I took the challenge, but may be assessed, so it's discretionary.
Okay.
And I didn't even know this section was in there, to be honest, because, I mean, engineers and architects did this, I didn't. So you could simply just change the word challenge and may.
Okay.
And that would be consistent with the fee thing, that you said, and a fee ordinance.
That, that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then you've got one table, could you take the table out that's given here instead of having duplication of tables, have one table and one ordinance?
I haven't gone through all these ordinances, these tables and a lot of these ordinances. It was in the first one.
I, I think, I think the table is a separate ordinance to set, to set what the fees are, and then this is a reference.
Yeah, there's, there's an ordinance for the fees.
For the fees, and then this is a, this is a, this is as a reference in...
No, these are, these are fees. I mean, they're identical.
They're identical, but...
But they're in there too.
Well, when you have two, then you've got to modify two. If you have one, then one, if you say maybe assessed according to the fee schedule, then you've only got one reference.
Like in that first one, the IRC, it says, the scheduled permit fees is amended as follows, and then you set it out, just put down, and set forth in appendix D.
Yeah, we could do that. That'd work.
That ways, appendix D is a control.
Right.
That makes sense. Make, make appendix D, D.
Okay.
The next, trying to move on, not, I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I'm...
So before we forget, did we, did I mean to interrupt you? On the ordinance aden, adopting the International Residential Code, we will want to strike E.
Which E?
Um, under...
On the fourth page.
Yeah, on the fourth page, we'll want to strike E. So that will, that will change everything after that.
Well, Jeffrey, are you making the changes on here so we can sign tonight and then adjust them?
I'm trying to.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Koflicha, I interrupted you.
Okay. It, it reads that if you violate the building code and you're caught, you're automatically guilty of a misdemeanor. You know?
Which code?
Uh, International Building Code. In section, section, it's right above section four, it references section 114 of the International Building Code. In the IBC, section 114, it describes the procedure of, of notification and allowing correction and, and legal, you know, to automatically say that you're guilty of a misdemeanor without due process. That seems a little...
Now, this might be, this, this isn't, this is consistent with all the language throughout the entire city code, where it says it's unlawful to do this or that, and if you're guilty of doing this, it's punishable by section 114. That's the catch-all punishment, which is like a $500 fine. It's, it's not, there's no automatic about it. They'd have to be cited in the municipal court with a long form complaint. Uh, this is the language that's used. There's, there's nothing wrong with this one.
Okay. The last, where it says such person shall be guilty of an offense.
Upon conviction.
Upon conviction.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, okay. No problem there. And, uh, that's all with the IBC. The, the last one on the building trades, uh, it's section five, right of entry of inspection. Um, the way, the way I read it, it's that the, uh, building official will have the right to enter any resident that he chooses to determine if work is being performed. Is that the intent?
Trying to get there.
Okay.
Where's that at, Leonard?
Section five of building trades.
Okay. Um, I, I, I see what you're saying. Here at the bottom, it says the entry and inspection may be made at any reasonable time.
But it doesn't set up whether construction's going on or anything. It's kind of, the way I read it, you could walk up to any house you choose to...
I certainly don't want to do that.
I know.
[laughing]
You probably have enough problems with, when you have to go out now.
Sometimes I don't want to enter my own home, I don't...
I've been there a few times, too.
So we could kind of clarify that a little bit. I was actually reading that in the code today. There has to be reasonable attempt to be there at a reasonable hour and a reasonable attempt to make that reasonable contact and for a reasonable purpose, so...
Well, you know, it, this is kind of odd in the, in the building trade license, too. Could this be put in to the building permit? Or, you know, I don't... Because it's talking about licensing of the building trades, and this really relates more to a homeowner.
I think, like I say, we, we use platforms from, from different cities to try to, to work off of, uh, 20 years of not having any changes. We didn't have, really have a platform to work off, so this is something that we've probably, I can't tell you what municipality we've borrowed it from, what platform we worked, but this is where we've put it, uh, and I think if we change the language a little bit, I think it'd be okay here. Um, but I think you're right. I don't, I don't want to go into any building at any time. I think there has to be a reason for wanting, for needing to go in there, except for in case of emergency. I think if we were to add language that would say in case of an emergency, um, or for reasonable inspection of property under construction or something along those lines.
Right, to identify that construction is...
If you just use, determine reasonable, any entry at any reasonable time.
Mm-hmm. But it does say if entry is denied, then the building official may apply to the court for the purpose of enforcing this right of entry.
Mm-hmm.
So the entry has to be for the purpose of ascertaining whether maintenance thereof and additions or improvements have been or being made according to building regulations. That's, has to be the purpose of it.
Yes.
You can't just go in to see what to cook on the grill.
But if I'm maintaining, my furnace is being maintained, so with that, does that give Don the right to come into my house when it's a residential unit and I've got a contractor doing the work? You know, maintenance is pretty broad, plus, you know, some governmental agencies are exempt from local inspection.
I think the purpose of it is designed to give you the authority to check and make sure the code's being enforced. I don't think it's intended to be intrusive, but if you think it's intrusive, you just tighten it for purpose.
But now we're, in this one, we're talking about the trade licensing. We're not talking about a building code.
Yeah, and Leonard, you and Don are having this discussion, and we're just all kind of listening, understanding about half of the specifics, okay? We're not architects and inspectors, and, you know, I can look at this and tell you how the court might interpret it. I can't tell you how an architect's going to interpret it.
Yeah, and I think part of the reason, maybe it's here because this is, not just regulating the building trades, it's also regulating contractors, electricians, plumbers, mechanical contractors to be working, to let them know the stipulations for us to be able to, to go in and do an inspection.
So you have the right to inspect their work.
That we have a right to inspect their work, so...
A lot of people would try and bypass, and this just gives him the right to try and catch him. But I, but if you want to tighten it, I mean, maybe he's tightening, I, I...
Well, defining because of, you know, even though I have a contractor working in my house, it is my house on maintenance, and that contractor doesn't have the right to allow anyone in, so there's kind of conflicts of, of both sides.
I mean, I think it can be tightened by making reasonable contact with the owner, making sure that we're at reasonable times and trying to, to ascertain permission. I think we could tighten it up that way, I think.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think if those changes were put in there, it would be a little more tolerant.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody wants to...
No.
To feel like somebody's walking in their house without, without knowing the reasons why and without having a justification.
So add language to require the consent of the owner.
To, to make attempts to require it.
Require consent of the owner, and if the owner doesn't give consent, you can do your administrative search warrant, get a permit order and do it anyway.
Right.
Right.
Is that all right?
Sorry, yes, you're right.
That works.
I was impatient. How out of character.
Well, if he has to go to court, he has to show probable cause that the code's being circumvented.
Yeah.
So kind of puts a burden on him to, before a judge would sign off on the search warrant.
Yeah, yeah.
We do search warrants on asbestos inspections today.
Yes.
Custom to do them.
Which I will be visiting with you about tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll be working on this tomorrow.
You know, even if, if a, if the law officer feels that there's narcotics or drugs being in his house, he can't just knock on the door and go in. There's process to go through.
I, I don't want to have any more power than, and authority than, than I presently have.
Well, that was, that was all my question, believe it or not.
Thank you. I mean, no, no, I mean, I appreciate it. I mean, we, we knew that this document would need to have some changes, and we knew, once this is in place going forward, it will be easier to make, to make the changes. But I think this is a necessary change. You know, when I tell people the building code that we use, the, using the response is, I don't know that I can get material on that. So we can get it updated and help to approve our, you know, a portion of our ISO rating and, and do that. I think it would be good going forward. So thank you very much for your consideration.
And then the consistency with the surrounding towns.
Well, and it would be...
That's really going to be a great benefit, and even now you're in compliance or compatible with the Fire Marshal's Office and the State of Kansas.
The State of Kansas, and so, it's great.
Okay, so we are going to amend, have to go through this.
I'll try to, for you, if it's all right.
Go for it.
Take the permit fees out and put those two ordinances and just go with this other ordinance, say, in the appendix D.
There's a section E coming out, a warrant.
International Residential Code.
Right. And then, um, the language we just talked about on entry will be revised so that, uh,
it has to be the consent of the owner at a reasonable daylight hour. And if the consent's not given, if he feels strongly enough about it, then he can apply for an administrative search warrant.
Right.
And that's a set procedure already.
Then we'll also adjust penalties for, uh, for projects that are started without a building.
It'll just say may.
May, change that to may, yes.
Add the word may.
Actually, that's the way it's worded in the 11th ordinance on your list. It's already, it's already, uh, changed that way. I just didn't, when I, we looked at appendix D ordinance, I didn't know those were also contained in these other ordinances, so I didn't go back and cross-reference.
So we can make a motion to adopt the 10 ordinances as amended?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Wow.
Yes.
Are we amending the...
Are we amending the Appendix D?
No.
Okay, so it'd just be adopt the 10 ordinances as amended, and then...
Not only, just adopt them as discussed. I mean, there's only three of them, I think, that have changes.
And so adopt those 11 per our discussion.
That's the ones I had, were the international residence, number two and six.
Yeah, one, two, and six.
Yeah. So the motion could be, see if I can do this correctly.
No way.
That we, that we adopt 10 building code ordinances with amendments to the International Residence Code, the International Building Code, and the building trades.
Code.
Not code or ordinance. Ordinance would be a better term. Okay? And, amending Appendix D regarding the building permit fees as presented, because that's what the...
But we're not, we're not...
But amending...
It's an ordinance that amends Appendix D.
The ordinance is amending Appendix D.
Okay. So change it from 10 to 11 ordinances?
Yeah, change it from 10 to 11 ordinances, then. Well, 10 of them are building code ordinances. That's why I brought in the building...
The Appendix D is a fee schedule, and it is a separate ordinance that's not, it is related to the building code, but it's...
I think it's amended. I think he said that, just in a different way.
Yes, okay. I tried to. I misunderstood. So you're going to read that back?
Good luck to you, brother.
Well, let me try again.
Okay, do that.
Let me try again, because that's not fair. I mean, that's not fair. Okay, so, I'd move that we adopt the 10 building code ordinances with amendments to the International Residential Code, the International Building Code, and the building trades, I want to say code, I should say...
Ordinance.
Ordinance, yes, I'm sorry. To the ordinances for the International Residential Code, the International Building Code, and ordinance on the building trades. And then this is where, then the, then we're going to amend...
No, you're adopting an ordinance amending Appendix D.
Okay, adopting an ordinance for Appendix D. Amending the ordinance.
Regarding the building permit fee.
Okay, there we go. Got it? Are we good?
Are you good? I'll second it.
Good. Quickly. All right, so it's been moved and seconded that we take care of these ordinances. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you for your work. That's a lot of time there. Okay, this additional item is next, this item D, is, this is an agreement with the Montgomery County Sewer District Number Two, and it's a settlement, actually. And so I would make a motion that we approve the settlement agreement with Montgomery County Lateral Sewer District Number Two, and authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement. Would it be a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I don't have...
We need to amend or approve the amendment.
I thought we did that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we did.
I'm sorry. I thought we did that. Because I've missed that one.
He's a little behind.
All right, I'm, my apologies. I've missed that one before. Okay, reports, okay, on the nomination of the, there's a report in our packet of the nomination of the William Inge Boyhood Home on 514 North Fourth Street to the National Register of Historic Places, which is a good one, that's a good one. Recreation, November, Recreation Commission minutes from November 15th are in our packet. Question or comments about those? Anybody? Okay, commission comments?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Just, do we have an update on Peter Pan extension? Is that going forward with the negotiated contract and the other portion for the grant to get a bid?
Uh, yeah, Sean is gone, but that's my understanding, there's been no holdup or anything on that.
Good. On the schedule with PEC for their drawings for the electrical, was there any update on that, where they were?
We just got an email from Sarah Unruh. We're having a meeting, I can't remember what day it was, next...
I think it's the 20th.
20th, too.
Thirty percent.
She's got 30% of the drawings done, which is probably a little more than that, but the way we look at it, but, or...
Are they going to give us a date that they'll have it ready to go out to bid at that time? That's, seems like it's taking a lot longer than what they told us. You know, we'd probably need to start pressing them.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that, so you're right, so.
An update on scheduling and...
Okay. That was all of it.
Okay. All right, we do have another executive session scheduled. This one is for non-elected personnel, so I would move, how long you think we're going to need, Craig? 20 minutes?
20 minutes. Let's do 20. I'll be optimistic.
Okay. All right, I would move that we recess from the executive session for discussion of employees' performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption, KS 75-4319-B-1. We will resume at, in 20 minutes, would be 7:22. Can we make that 7:25?
Sure.
Because we need to take care of business here.
7:25.
Second.
Okay. All those, who will be in there will be the city manager and the three commissioners. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And, all right, we're back in open session, and for the items on the agenda, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
The meeting.
Second motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Sign our papers. Get to go home.
When you taught in Cheniere.